Good morning, we'll go ahead and start the April first. We're gonna go ahead and start the April first special session. For the Board of Supervisors, phone call please, Michelle.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Leyland.
Here.
Kurtynback.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Please join in a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is to fly inside the states of America and to repurpose and protect against one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, agenda received as proposed or as amended.
So.
Second. You've got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Are we on the special?
We're on the special.
Okay.
Item two, nine AM hearing on the proposed Black Hawk County budget for the year ending June 30th, 2026 will begin with a presentation by Friday and let them show.
Alright, um, I have something to do subtitles if you care what I would like, so if someone else had to get them out there, I would like to. Elle, have you seen that? Never had this before. Sorry about that.
There we go.
They always have to do something unexpected to us. Hopefully that's the worst thing that happens today. Uh, so I started out, I thought it would be helpful to share a little few statistics about Black Hawk County. In terms of our, and some of this is review for many of you, so our population comparisons, and I'm just using the official census, so 2010 and 2020. Black Hawk counties virtually remain the same, plus a little bit, so you can see there are many other counties that grew some, we just did not. For doing comparisons, I had to use the 25 budget because that's all that's available at the state level right now because we haven't filed our 26 budget yet. So, our assessed and taxable property value comparisons here, so these are the 10 largest counties in Iowa by population. We sit right in the middle, we were about fifth in population, we're about fifth, both in assessed value and our taxable value. Right down in the middle there. Then for TIF valuation, and I don't know if we've talked about this yet this year, but for fiscal 25, this shows you, and I had to leave out Polk County because their numbers were so large, the chart became meaningless, so you do not see Polk County on here. They, they actually have like 4.2 billion in TIF. That's compared to about 1 billion that we're seeing on here, so you can see they would be four times off this chart. And the, the interesting thing in here, you can see that Dallas County, which is near Des Moines, has the highest in terms of TIF value, both for 24 and 25. Black Hawk County, they're in the center, has changed quite a bit, increased quite a bit for 2025. We were fifth largest in TIF property values, 10 and a half percent of the total taxable value is currently in TIF. And those percentages range from a low in Potawatomi County, that's Council of Love's, of 2.7 percent, and the high is Dallas County at 12 percent.
How much was the potawatomi you said?
I'm sorry. Potawatomi, what's the, what was the one? 2.7 percent. So for fiscal 25, the property taxes collected by the, again, those 10 largest. Black Hawk County still sitting squarely in the middle, about fifth, which is consistent with most of the things that we have seen. I also could have been asked a lot about fund balance comparisons, so I thought I would share that as well. This is, this shows only the unassigned fund balance, I didn't include the other types, but unassigned general fund balance at June of 24 and June of 23. Black Hawk County, while we don't have the largest dollar amount, we do have the most in terms of percentage of expenditures. We actually ranked number one in 23, dropped to number two in 24. We're 67 percent, and I did count transfers out, which we don't always do, so these percentages may sound a little different to you than what we discussed before. So 67 percent in 23, 62 percent in 24. And Polk County, obviously in terms of dollars, is many times more than the others, and they are obviously the largest county, their population's a million compared to ours. We've had a lot of law changes affecting budgets in both fiscal 25 and 26, so I wanted to mention both of those. In 25, there were limits placed on growth in taxes based on how much your non-taxable, yeah, non-TIF taxable grew. We did not have a restriction like that in 2025 because our Black Hawk County growth was only 2.59 percent. Other changes that happened, the business property tax credits were changed to a reduction in taxable value, or an exemption in other words. And for now, the state is providing replacement revenue for that. In 25, it also had a homestead exemption for homeowners that actually reduced the taxable value of your property by $3,250 in 2025. However, that change, the state is no longer providing.
The property is no longer.
Is no longer providing replacement revenue. Military property valuation exemption increase, and that is again, an exemption off the home's value. That increased from $1,852 to 4,000. And they also took away the ability for counties to exceed the $3.50 general basic levy cap and the $3.95 general basic rural levy cap. In 2026, they tweaked that law some more, so we had more changes that came our way. Growth was limited in taxes, it was limited if you had growth of more than 3 percent of taxable value. They reduced that to 2.75 percent, and that actually did hit Black Hawk County for fiscal 26. Our taxable growth was 3.17 percent, so we did, you have a restriction in our general basic levy for 26. The business property tax credits changed completely to a reduction in taxable property value. Again, we are getting replacement revenue for that for now. Homestead exemption increased more, by an additional 3,500 up to $6,500 total. Military exemption was not increased further. So our property value changes, our taxable total value grew by, again, the 3.17 percent, this is just a graph showing that. Taxable value for rural grew 2.2 percent to almost 997 million. Next chart just showed you how that growth in values, growth or decline, has changed over the last 10 years, about 12 years actually. Both for taxable and there's rural only. One of the other things that occurred, our residential rollback increased this year by 2.4 percent, resulting in 47.43 percent of residents being taxable this year, that was only 46 percent for 25. Just a reminder, multi-residential rollback was merged with residential in 24. So over time, multi-residential has dropped from 90 percent taxable to this 47 percent, that's a big chunk of value. And also, the business property tax credit being repealed made it complicated to calculate taxes for commercial industrial businesses because their first 150,000 in value, you apply the residential rollback, and then the 90 percent value of the 150,000. We've talked about credits that have become exemptions, and the amount that, because our growth exceeded 2.75 percent for 2026, our general basic levy is capped, now instead of 350, it's only 3.465. That level of growth provided 448,000 more to use for allowable general basic levy purposes, but we lost about 213,000 because of that restriction. So our proposed budget highlights for 2026, our countywide tax levy is $5.60, almost $5.64. Total property tax collections will be 34,958,098 dollars. Our rural levy is at $3.78, that collection is an additional 3.3,763,122 dollars. So when we get all those together, our total taxes for 26 will be 36,924,999 dollars. That is an increase of nearly 1.8 million. Our assessed value increased 1.19 percent for 26, only 154 million. For taxable valuation was 3.17 percent increase, or 189 million. That's, a great deal of that is due to that change in rollback, that's why we're seeing higher taxable and not as much growth in the assessed. So our countywide, or what we sometimes call the urban levy, I'm just showing you here how that's made up. You can see most of that is our general basic levy. We do have the general supplemental in addition to that, another $1.93, and the debt service is going to 24 cents, still saying it less than a quarter. Our unincorporated, or our rural levy, we refer to that both ways, they pay all the things that were on the previous chart, plus the rural levy. So this just shows what, what that looks like. And that rural levy is the $3.78. What are we spending all that money on? We'll talk about that for the next few slides a little bit. So, by type, most of it, 50 percent of it is spent on salaries and benefits for all our employees, and that's across all funds. 40.6 million roughly. Our operating expenses are 22 percent, that's 17.8 million. That's what keeps the lights on, pays the fuel, paper, office supplies, everything else that we use. Debt service is at 8 percent, it'll be about 4.5 million. And that includes amounts that are reimbursed by the Solid Waste Commission and E911, in addition to what we pay using property taxes. Our capital is at 19 million, or 23 percent of our total expenses. That has been higher the last few years, primarily due to the ARPA federal program. Our rural fund expenditures, that's a smaller fund, so I'm showing you what things the rural pays on top of everything else. Almost half of it is transferred to secondary roads for road maintenance and construction, 47 percent. Sheriff's patrol in the growth parts of the county takes another large chunk at 36.4 percent. Our share to operate Consolidated Communications, which is our emergency dispatch center, is 9.9 percent. The county libraries are 3.5 percent. Planning and zoning, 2 percent, and other miscellaneous things such as we, that we participate in, such as our share of the emergency managed mid-agency budget, takes 1.1 percent of that rural levy.
On that rural thing there.
Yes.
Michelle, is the township dollars included in any of this?
Yes, it's in that 1.1 percent for other 10,000, 2,000. So by service area, this is how our money is spent. Public safety is really the largest portion of our budget at 32.9 percent. And that includes operations of the jail, and the patrol, everything that we do. It also includes the attorneys, Black Hawk County attorney staff in there. Physical health and social services is about 12 percent of our expenses. Roads, this year is 10 and a half percent, a little bit lower than last year. Administration is 10.3 percent. Environment and education, which includes a lot of conservation, is at 4.3 percent. Government services, which would include things like the operations of our treasurer's office where you're processing your property taxes, license plates, also the reporter's office, if you need those services, that's another 3.8 percent of our expenses. Capital projects, again, 21 and a half percent, and debt service, 4.7 percent. I also have a slide for how our revenues break out, and not quite half, 49 percent roughly is property tax revenue. Use of money in property at 1.56 million. Been fortunate, we've gotten to see that go up with interest rates, we'll see if those are able to hold steady. Charges for services at 5.5 percent of our revenue, about 4.8 million. Intergovernmental, about 19.4 million, that's 16.8 million dollars. That would include grant revenue and anything that we are reimbursed for from other agencies. Licenses and permits, relatively small, less than a percent, 705,000. And miscellaneous revenue, just 4.2 percent, that's donations and a few other miscellaneous things. Other financing sources, which includes transfers, I probably should take that out of this slide because it's kind of moving money from where it's levied to where it's spent, but that's about 16.7 million. So for FY '26, what is the county's budget's impact to our taxpayers? And you can see on this top row, the residential, urban taxpayer, so if you live in a city, the county's share of taxes that you will pay on the hundred, per 100,000 of your assessed value, you'll pay $267 based on the maximum proposed levy that we're hopefully approving today. That compares to $256 for fiscal 25, an increase of $11 or 4.3 percent. And then I also have included commercial, industrial, theirs go up a slightly lower amount, 2.35 percent and 2.808 percent. Residential rural, so this is someone who does not live in any of the cities in the counties, they are in the rural area. 100,000, a home value at 100,000 dollars would pay 447 dollars versus 432 dollars in 25. That's an increase of $15 or 3.47 percent. And agricultural property in the county for 100,000 value would pay 695 dollars versus 669 for 25. $26 increase or 3.89 percent. Our tax levy trends, which the tax rate is only one part of the formula, but people often do ask about that, so I'm showing you the chart. You can see how our rates came down in about fiscal 21, 22, primarily due to the state taking over the mental health levy. We no longer levy for mental health services. They have been fairly flat since that time, rising just slightly for fiscal 26. And our average change in property taxes paid, and I just did example properties over a 10-year period. I included all the revaluations, as you know, we revalue individual properties every two years. So over the past 10 years, from 2017 through what we're projecting for 26, we actually had a reduction for an urban residential taxpayer of 1.62 percent. That obviously is well below cumulative inflation rate for that time period. Commercial properties, coincidentally, truly, is a zero. There's just no change, they're paying the same thing in fiscal 26 as they would have been fiscal 17. And that is if the property value was half a million in 2017, up to whatever it would be today, which is over 600,000. Industrial dropped 14.73 percent. Over that time, the rural residential rose 16.79 percent. Agricultural rose 22 percent over that time, and multi-residential, of course, fell dramatically, partly because of the taxable portion falling and also values, so about 44 percent reduction for them.
Michelle, is the multi-residential gonna be like an apartment complex?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and some people say I shouldn't have that row on there anymore because now it's just taxed the same as residential, but I think when we're looking at trends in history, it's important to understand 10 years ago, it was a different picture for that type of property than what it is today. The next section of this, we're gonna talk about capital improvements and debt, and why, most of this is review, but I wanted to review it one more time. To issue general obligation bonds for counties, public buildings, so if we want to do anything to a public building, if the project cost is going to exceed 1.56 million, a public boat is required, with some very limited exceptions. And this will, this will become important when we go to our next meeting to understand why we're having a number of actions on that agenda. General corporate purpose, which is all other kinds of things that are eligible for bonding, those are capped at project costs of less than 400,530 dollars. If you spend 400,000 roughly or lower, you do not have a public boat requirement for those. Another thing to remember is the conservation projects, those are generally limited to the acquisition and development of conservation land. They're all considered a general corporate purpose. And the thing that happened, another change that happened under the House File 718 rules, is that equipment is not eligible to be funded using bonds, so we're limited in how we can acquire the kind of equipment that we need to do our operations now. So, the question in my mind became, how do we fund our equipment going into the future? Option one, fund it using the general basic levy, but as you all know, we have currently exceeded, with our other salaries, benefits, general operating expenses, we've exceeded the amount that we can tax under that levy. So, we either have to reduce staffing, cut something, or find another way to fund equipment. And so the proposal was, should we use our existing general fund reserves? And how much do we need? So our, our current capital improvements plan that has been submitted by all the departments, has department requests of about 6.6 million, and that starts actually with 2025, so for the next six years, it's about 6.6 million. And so, do we have enough reserve to do that? We do, currently, as we, as you remember from the earlier slide, we have generous unassigned fund balance right now. So I am proposing that we use that to purchase the equipment that we don't have another way to acquire over the years. We do have enough to get us through probably the next five years. Well, that's why I'm hoping if there is, if performance exceeds budget annually, that we maybe can roll that over and continue to purchase equipment that way. We have made several commitments to use our fund balance for during fiscal 25. As you know, we are budgeting, anticipating vacancies, which I'm just calling a turnover pool, of a million dollars. We also, in last year's, the 25 budget, committed to additional community agency funding of a quarter million. We've made a commitment to the Arlo support cart project of a million. We know we need about 835,000 to complete all the approved projects that, for ARPA funding. And then, what we've already talked about, using ineligible bond capital items to use fund balance of that, that's 1,024,000. If all of our other activities came in right at budget, we would use 4 million, 4.1 million of our fund balance this year. Hopefully, we will not, but that's, that is what could happen. And our unassigned fund balance remaining would then be 24.3 million, dropping potentially to 50 percent of our expenditures. And this chart we've looked at before, this just shows the annual amount of purchases that departments have planned for over the next several years, that I would hope we could use our fund balance to pay for. And we, we do have other bond-eligible projects that departments have submitted. So, this chart shows what would happen as we issue bonds to complete those major projects, what will happen to property taxes. And we are seeing an increase of eight cents this year, and then it will remain fairly level, maybe go up a penny, and that will depend on how our property values grow, may not even need to increase over the next several years. But that allows us to do all the projects that are currently in the capital improvements program as submitted by the departments. And one interesting thing to note, that 24 cents debt service levy will keep us the second lowest of the 10 largest counties in the state. Story County, and this is at fiscal 25 levels, because I don't know what they're doing for 26 yet. Story County is the only county that has a lower debt services levy than we do of the 10 large counties. And I've heard people suggesting that we're going so much into debt, so I wanted to just kind of project, and I'm sorry, I put this together last night, so it's not very pretty, but it does, it gets to the answer, I guess. So our, our outstanding bonds will be, for the amount that the county has to pay back, will be 5,010,000 dollars at the end of June of 26, if, as we issue the 5 million that's being proposed for this year. So, that is, I think, very low even for counties. Counties don't necessarily always borrow, but we, that's a low part. Now, when you, when you look at our audit, you'll see that we really have 10.9 million in debt outstanding. But nearly half of that is, was issued on behalf of the Solid Waste Commission, which is paid back at their fees, that's what that 4.37 million is. And then we still have a portion being paid back by E911, 1.5 million balance there. The other thing I was asked about was staffing changes for fiscal 26. There's really only a couple, the Attorney's Office, if you remember, they want to promote an assistant attorney to create a second percentage deputy county attorney. And the Sheriff's Office is creating something called the chief deputy position, and they are reducing the number of lieutenants at the same time to do that because that position is classified as a captain. But they also are increasing the number of sergeants by one, so they, at the end of all that, they end up with one additional position.
But the, the attorneys was not an increase, that was just a change?
It's a promotion. Right.
Promotion.
It's a promotion.
Not a.
Not an increase of bodies, so we really only have one additional body countywide this year. Yep, so. Say thank you to all of you for your patience, attention as we worked our way through this budget. The, oh, I do have one more document. It's, it's a great deal of numbers, but do you, would you walk through any of these? This is how.
I think it'd be good to walk through.
You do want, okay, let me, one second. Put it back for me while I get it.
And we'll be doing this again in a few weeks.
We'll probably do a bit briefer, maybe just talk through things that change after today, I thought.
How many years has it been that we did this twice? How many years has it been that we did this twice? I know that was kind of a state-based change.
About four, I guess.
Four, I'm gonna say three, so it's closer than I think.
Yeah, I've already done it. So what we're gonna walk through is just an example of a person, well, tries to make, includes other taxes other than just the counties for a property owner, so well. We got those for a variety of the cities. I, I did not try to do all of them, 'cause there's probably forty or more taxing districts in the county.
So does that show on, on the screens for the audience?
It will, when we.
Oh, you just had to.
Yeah, I was waiting.
Okay.
Thought maybe just move right back, so. I'm just filling the silence right now.
Yeah, I think you can.
So start.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll, you want to put that for me again, please? Thank you for doing that, appreciate it. All right. So to develop this, I used the taxpayer mailings that were sent out to each property tax owner in the county. And these are just samples of what will happen based on those. And we know, all, all these entities have to have another hearing to adopt their budgets. I've already heard some of them are reducing from what's on here. So this is, this is just simply showing you what would happen based if the rates that were stated on that mailer were adopted.
So these were as of yesterday's rates, if we were to put a date on this?
Sure.
Or a particular?
Yep, that'd be a good, good one to use. So the way to, and I, I did it for an urban residential property and for rural residential, and I didn't, didn't do the others. It just gets to be so, so many numbers. But if you, so for this first one, if you happen to live in the city of Cedar Falls and you are in the Cedar Falls School District, I've listed out here what your school tax would be at six hundred and ninety, your county at the two sixty seven, same number we talked about earlier, and the city of Cedar Falls at five hundred and ninety three. So that, that's a total of one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. And I will say one caveat on here, this does not include the smaller taxing bodies such as Hawkeye Community College, the Assessor, your rural, the township taxes. I only use the three large entities that appear on that tax mailer because that seems like what's out in the public. So for Cedar Falls then, for the schools, that increase is five dollars. Again, this is for a hundred thousand dollar assessed home, by the way, I forgot to mention that. Use the eleven dollars for the county, which we, again, same as we already talked about, forty three dollar increase for the schools. So that property will see a total increase of fifty nine dollars. Of that, eighteen point six percent of that increase is from the counties, the eleven dollars, eleven of the fifty nine. You can see most of that is from the city at seventy two point eight nine percent. Now, if you're in the rural area, but you have Cedar Falls schools, that's what you see on the rural residential column. So there is no city column there because they aren't paying the city. So their schools will be the same, six hundred and ninety. The county does increase because we add that rural levy, four hundred and forty seven dollars. So that makes the county's portion of that increase for that property seventy five percent, which makes sense because they're not paying a city levy. So I've gone through, I don't know if you want me to talk about all these, or are there particular ones you'd like to look at? And I have Dunkerton, Elkhorn, Evansdale, Yilkerville.
For, forgive me, just not familiar with how these go normally, but I just wanna make sure everybody out here understands. So do they, will they have the ability to ask questions afterwards, or?
Yes.
Okay.
And they can ask now, anyone can ask if they have a question, yep.
I think we would walk through the, the two different Waterloo scenarios for sure.
Okay, sure. Put them kind of in alphabetical order here, so. All right, if you, so if you live in the, if you have your property in the city of Waterloo and the Waterloo School Districts, your school taxes are proposed to be eight hundred and forty six dollars, an increase of hundred and ninety nine dollars. A county, same as we keep talking about, two sixty seven will be your taxes, that's an increase of eleven. And the city, your taxes are one thousand seventy seven dollars, an increase of fifty three dollars. So the county's share of that total increase of two hundred and sixty three dollars is four point one eight percent. And I believe I have heard that the schools is not likely to be as high as what they published, so I, I do think people's actual tax will be less than what's showing on here. And again, if you're in the Waterloo schools, but you're in a rural area, you pay the Waterloo schools tax of eight hundred and forty six dollars. And then you pay the county including the rural levy, which again is the four hundred and forty seven. So that total increase would be two hundred and fourteen dollars, and seven percent of that would be from the county. If you happen to live in Waterloo, but you're in Cedar Falls School Districts, the Cedar Falls schools are six hundred and ninety dollars. And the county's at two sixty seven, and the city of Cedar, whoops, that's not right, I've got the city of Cedar Falls on there instead of Waterloo. I'll have to fix that last one, that should be a thousand seventy seven for Waterloo on that last row. I apologize for that, too many numbers rolling around in my head. But that, that's how this worksheet works, so you can see how an individual is impacted in various locations. Other questions about any of that, or? And I think that's all I, that's all I have to present for now.
Yeah, I'm just reiterating, yeah, these are the proposed maximum, but they are all able to go down.
Correct. That is correct, we're all required to have the second hearing. Yours will be April twenty first, and I'm not sure when the other entities are having theirs, but sometime before the end of April, because we all have to be, have them certified to the state by the end of April.
By the end of, yeah.
All right. For the purposes of the meeting, we have a motion to receive and place on file proof of publication of the notice of public hearing is published in March fifteenth, two thousand twenty five, in Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier and March twentieth, two thousand, two thousand twenty five in Hudson.
So moved?
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All on the same side, motion carries. Item two C, public comments and questions. Just gonna make an assumption. Are there any questions from members of the public?
Okay, I got that. Uh, this little paper here I got, seen about these changes here, says, uh, most taxpayers will see lower taxes than what appears here as assessed values. Did not rise ten percent as indicated, is that a toll of all the assessed values in property, or was that an average?
It's my understanding that the state applied a ten percent increase to all values, even though that's not what we're seeing for twenty six. So that's why I put that comment in the county section, because if, if you look at, and I am sorry, I didn't think to bring one of those in here, on page two where it talks about how much the county taxes are going up, I know they're not going up that much, 'cause we just, we just showed you. You know, if you're a urban residential, it's going up four point two percent, not, I think it shows fifteen percent probably for the county.
Right.
So that's why I put that note there, it's, yeah, felt like it's just bad information, and I thought you should know it's not really, that's not really what it's gonna be.
I feel it's very misleading on that piece of paper we were required to send out. It's not actual factual numbers, but that's what we're required to send.
Yeah, why did school board decide to raise it that much? That doesn't seem fair, I mean, based on my, lack of economy, splitting on social security and all that. People can't afford that big an increase, how they expect to pass it through? You're gonna see a lot of people moving out.
I, I am, I will say that I'm proud of our work, thank you, Michelle, for all of your hours putting the budget together. Fact that I think we've collectively, in terms of our, for three fifty or three forty seven, utilizing reserves to fulfill capital needs of the county, and really getting to a point where we can start to level off on our debt service, which helps to create some predictability, at least at the county level of taxation. I think is, is important ways for us to do our work, recognize that the school board has difficult decisions to make. The cities have difficult decisions to make as well, but I'm proud of the work that we've been able to do here at the county to keep that pretty consistent. Nobody likes opening up those, those pieces of paper in the mail, we don't like it, nobody likes it. But I am proud of the work that we were able to do through this budget process. And working with each department to recognize what's needed, and to put a quality budget together for quality operation.
If that letter wasn't what you guys are receiving, you'd be representing why, why you sent out every, every Waterloo resident, as far as I know, why was that sent out with that high a standard? I mean, that's kind of putting people going, hey, what is going on?
We agree, it is, it is required by the state.
Why send that letter?
Uh, the state legislature a handful of years ago, two years ago, I believe.
Yeah, about seven eighteen, that must be years.
Yeah, they required us to send that out with the numbers that, as we know, said, you know, we're, we're at least able to provide that note, that these numbers aren't, uh, don't reflect actual numbers. But yeah, we are required, our hands are, are tied. We're also required, it's almost forty thousand, is that right?
Yep.
Almost forty thousand dollars to send that out. And it's based on the fact that the numbers on it aren't necessarily factual, makes it a forty thousand dollar waste, in all honesty.
You wonder where my next question could be then?
Yeah.
Is, I still haven't got an explanation why, so if the state's requiring it, why? So if those numbers are not factual, we need solid information in this town, not, you know, things I can send people into a tailspin and wondering what's going on. We're about increased costs, we're already dealing with a lot of increased costs. So it's kind of weird that the state will push on the city to do something like that, you guys can't tell us why.
The, I mean, I'll give a frank assessment, the state legislature is made up of very few people that ever served in local government, and it shows very well, they don't understand very well how property taxes work. They pass legis, legislation haphazardly without looking at what all the implications and consequences are. And so I think it's kind of amateur hour in the state legislature right now.
That's our state.
That's the state.
So you, we've got these problems going on in the state right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
And being on, there's more changes in the works.
Uh, so that ten.
But are they for the good or the bad?
We will see.
Big surprises.
Okay, that means the bad.
I like, I'd like to address that mailing just a little bit more. So this, the state was making an effort to make it simpler, so they arbitrarily decided that we'll just use a ten percent assessed value, assessed value increase. Maybe that makes sense in another part of the state, I don't know, I, I really don't know, maybe in Dallas County, which is growing like a weed, maybe that works there. It just, it is an actor here, but they're trying, they were making assumptions statewide, and then that doesn't necessarily fit what our, what we're doing.
You know what old country people say about assumptions, right?
Uh-huh.
You know, you guys all, remember that, you know about that, right? That's important. So I'm hoping in our local community that we have real facts, real numbers. I've seen a lot of very good information, which is a good way to go, so you guys presenting facts. So as long as everything's solid on that, that's good, but it's a little bit worrisome when you hear that coming from your state.
You know, I, I look at it as prepare for the worst, kind of a warning order, and, and so perhaps there's no perfect way to do it, but would you rather, again, not up to us, but would you rather give, be given that letter, like this is the worst that it could possibly be, or have it be undershot, underestimated, and then you're preparing for a little bit lower, and then in reality, it becomes much worse for you? And maybe at the end of the day, it doesn't matter, but it's, I think it's the best we can do right now to give information.
Agreed, it is better to have worst case scenario, but it'd be nice to hear some positive case scenarios.
Yeah. We'd probably agree with you very much on that. Some positive, we would agree with you to have some positive responses on that, because this has been, what, somewhat detrimental, I think, to the work that we do. And that this word, when it goes out, that they hear these numbers, that's often the first numbers, and the only numbers that a lot of people relate to is what that change is going to be. And you don't realize that it's, there will be two hearings, one to say this could be the max, and then another that says what it is actual. And so that makes it difficult for even the residents to, to know what we're doing, so.
When we get these means after work, that'd be a little easier. Well, I'm just saying, if you're gonna have two means, I'll throw it out there.
Like what, what timeframe?
Well, anything after four o'clock is usually more accessible for most people to be able to attend. That's usually when, I mean, you may need a bigger room, if this keeps going this route, there's a lot more people show up for this stuff. But it's important to hear the, the voices of your constituents, you know?
Absolutely. Well, it certainly rallies the citizens, but for the wrong reasons, not, you know, that it gets everyone excited on the wrong end of it, thinking that what are we doing and how will we live here? Instead of what is the county and what are we doing and working toward to keep you all here, and to keep it as low as possible. You know, Tavis touched on it, but it's something like, say, the supervisors that have been in office even before us have tried to do for the county's level is to stabilize that tax increase as much as we can, so we are not having to live in these peaks and valleys of what's gonna happen to us every year. Obviously, we get some surprises, and quite honestly, most of those surprises come from the state mandating these changes and telling us what we have to do. That creates more expense, as we said, through the mailing and different things that we have to do, and, and it doesn't, it has the opposite effect of what we want to do for residents where they can rely on the information and know what to expect as much as possible, so.
I understand, it's probably because the state doesn't have to sit in this room. They don't have to deal with constituents that they have on, so, I understand, and I appreciate your guys' answers.
One thing I've been impressed in doing this, walking the mill of this budget process is looking for, I can't explain anything what's going on at the Department of Schools, but I can tell you that part of my focus coming in here and what I'm seeing is this is not just this year's budget. We're looking five years in the head to keep it, and keep, trying to get that tax limit down as much as we can and keep it low. Trying to keep the bleeps out of there, so, no, we are trying to do all we can to control costs.
And I appreciate that.
It is nice to see, however, an audience, we haven't really had that as far as participation in the past. And so please know, like I say, we're welcoming, I guess, you to attend our meetings or ask questions or call our offices when you have concerns, because that is, like I said, we do need to hear from our constituents.
It's the Carol, yeah, yeah.
Did anyone in this county receive this letter we're talking about?
Yes.
I got my assessment, but was there a whole page letter?
Yeah, probably two weeks ago. Yeah, at least two weeks ago, yeah.
Since you're in the middle of government position, states, the city is below, there's the county, there's, there's the state, and then there's the federal above everybody. So everybody changes their own rules to meet their own needs. One of your things here is efficiency, as you go. Got a lot of talk on what money is gonna be spent for, that talk on what you need. We haven't heard anybody say we can control some of these things by being more efficient. What goals do you have in your agenda to increase the efficiency of the government of our county?
I think that goes in respect to just each department, with some of the upgrades that they want to do, that'll help them. I know, it sounds like with the Treasurer's Office specifically, and Linda can speak to that more accurately, but I think that the remodel, the things that's been happening with them has helped, or will help down the road to help get more people through more quickly when it comes to prop, any tax payments. And I guess more specifically, any department head would have a better idea to kind of explain what their, what their ideas down the road as far as the requests that they're making for new equipment. Roads Department, just for example, when you have things that are breaking down, then it obviously becomes more inefficient when you have older equipment that needs to be either towed or replaced, or it's the downtime associated with it when it's not being able to be used. So some of the things, as you probably know, just need to be replaced over time, and, and so not being an expert from any of these departments, the only department I can speak to would be law enforcement, having worked in that for a very long time. Efficiency is important, you know, and you have to find, it costs money to, the reality is that to be efficient, it does, it costs money to get, keep up with technology and have reliable equipment, so. I don't know if that answers your questions, or that's me just rambling, but.
I can speak to a few specifics on efficiency that we've done over the last number of years. We've done a lot of digitization of our records, which in the long run saves a lot of time when you have to go back and look through things. We've added, this will coincide with the remodel of the treasurer's office, there's a ticketing system, so people can actually make an appointment instead of waiting. And that will actually, once they're in there, they'll be able to look at, do we have the right amount of staff, or are there people, positions that we don't need to fill. The health department underwent a whole huge reassessment in making sure that they weren't duplicating services already being done by other agencies in the community. And the staff numbers went down a lot. This was a number of years ago, but it was, it was a huge, huge undertaking. There's, there's also, you know, all of our county departments participate in different state and national associations, that they're learning about new and best practices that happen in other parts of Iowa, but also other parts of the country. And we implement those things here, and so that's, that's just a handful on, on law enforcement. The new body camera system, which they were due to be replaced with this new one, will actually save a lot of time, both with, if, in the sheriff's office, but also in the county attorney's office, because it's just got a more seamless interface between cases that involve Waterloo, Cedar Falls, the county, they can all access this stuff much more quickly with the la- less man hours. And so that's just a, a small kind of sampling of many of the efficiency things that are happening, but it's, it's a lens that all the county departments use when they're looking at all their operations.
In this budget specifically, we've got some investments in solar.
Yep.
We've got some investments in terms of purchasing equipment that we've historically rented, and so at some point, just becomes more cost effective. And then also shout out to Amanda Fezremeyer, HR Director, last year, I believe, we completed our compensation study. And a huge, a huge factor of efficiency is, is training new people. To, you've got folks leaving jobs to take other positions elsewhere, you've got to hire, train new folks, less efficiency within a department naturally during those times. And so focusing real county efforts on not just pay, but also benefits in order to keep employees here, keep them satisfied with their work, keep them engaged with their work, that typically generates better outcomes, when folks feel good about the work that they're doing. And we're not having to inefficiently spend so much more time on training. Also thinking over what the sheriff's department's done over the last couple of years with retooling some of those civilian positions. That certainly is a cost efficiency. So there are, there are quite a number, to Justin's point, each department really goes through, I'm really proud of the work that our department heads do and our staff do to continually stay engaged within their own disciplines at state and national levels, so that they can see what some of those best practices are, some of those trends are, and bring some of that, that good governance here at home.
The, the solar projects that we've already implemented across the county, with the, the estimated lifespan of those solar panels is like twenty-five years, I mean, the warranty period is twenty-five years, and then with the forty-year lifespan. In that about twenty-five year cycle, we'll save about four million dollars for the taxpayers and utility costs, with that then going up much more in the forty-year span. So we've, always when we have opportunity to invest in something that will ultimately save money, that's what we pursue. And the health department in particular is very aggressive at getting alternative forms of revenue. And so they get a lot of grants, a lot of both private and intergovernmental grants, that makes up about a, you know, over a million dollars of their budget that would otherwise have to be taxed for.
We also should mention that during our strategic planning, one of the focus groups of our staff has been about efficiencies, and what they can do. So it's all the way through all the departments, it isn't just the five of us up here, it's all the departments, that's the focus there.
Also accountability, it's come across the board, I think, and I didn't know if you had any particular interests or areas that you're thinking as far as us holding people accountable, because actually, we are accountable to you, the taxpayers and residents of, of this county. But our staff, if there are any areas that you're questioning or wondering about whether being efficient or being accountable, I would recommend you contact any of our departments or any of us on anything specific. Because our staff does an excellent job of making sure, they are very wise of taxpayer dollars and trying to be the most efficient and effective use of those dollars before they ever bring the projects to us. And then it's our job, obviously, to evaluate those and what projects we do, and the types of things that we do for the taxpayers. But if there were any particular areas that you're concerned about, if you let us know, after, any of us would be happy to talk with you about them, any of you, that, that would come up anytime, please.
Well, it's good to hear the listing of what's going on and the progress is being made. The meeting started with talking about general budget and general expenditures. And in the entire presentation, we didn't hear, and maybe it's not easily, or readily available. But we have these projects going on, and the total of those projects for last year, we saved five hundred thousand dollars. Or maybe it was only a hundred thousand dollars. Maybe it's a million dollars. The public has no idea of how good a job that has occurred, because we're talking about, the public sees tax increase, five percent, ten percent, fifteen percent. So a godly number like seventy-five percent. That's what we see. And if the programs of efficiency were really good, I mean, really good, we'd see no tax increase. And I applaud both the effort and the results. But I also have to look as a general taxpayer of saying to, to you, let's try and do better. And it's good psychology to send out a big tax bill, big percent, but only charge half of that, or only charge two percent of that. That's psychologically very advantageous. And I'm sorry, the state require you to do that. But as I started with, to the whole level of governments, and each level has their own rules to play by. I'd like to see Black Hawk County be more efficient. I'd like to see Black Hawk County sit there and say, everybody else's taxes are increasing, but because we're doing such a good job, yours won't. And what would really be impressive, and probably guaranteed reelection for everyone, we reduce taxes. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
One, one thing I'd just like to bounce back with, without divulging too much information, is be mindful to that there's things that happen in the background. As you can understand, that we just can't discuss yet, or, or aren't ready to bring to the public's knowledge, as we're aggressively, in my opinion, aggressively working towards solutions to this stuff. They've kind of described it, we're pitched between the city tip stuff and, and the state mandates, and so we have to be pretty creative on how we're going to get ourselves to do better. And so, A, I appreciate everybody coming out here, because that, it's motivating, I think, for all of us, it, it feels pretty good to know that you guys care, and you're willing to sacrifice your time to come in here and voice your thoughts and opinions. But when the time is right, things will come out. Just, I just ask you to have a little bit of faith. You know, I know you see things in the media, or perhaps you feel like you're left in the dark, but just, just know that we're working our tails off behind the scenes to make sure things are going to be better. So, probably not very helpful for you, but that's, 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 that is a little sneak peek at what we have going on.
We are living in times of uncertainty right now, and I know it's really difficult for all of you, but how are you planning on dealing with this? Because day to day, everything is changing, you don't have any idea what the future for health and education cost burdens are going to be. It's going to be passed on to the state, the state's going to pass it on to you. And I feel, I appreciate your work, but I feel bad for you right now, being in this position, but it, we can't keep getting taxed and taxed and taxed. People aren't going to be able to afford their homes, you're not going to have anybody, I mean, where are they going to go? How are you planning on dealing with all this uncertainty? That is, I mean, it's awful. I've never seen it in my entire life like this. I know people who lived through a depression did. We can't keep heading in the direction that we're going, it's, it's not good. And I'm not blaming you guys at all, I just wanted to bring it up that there's got to be a, a plan. What do we do?
It changes daily, so it is hard to plan. I mean, you're trying to take it a day at a time, or a week at a time, and like I say, have to deal with the things that come at us, just as you said, as they come, so, it's, it is a difficult time.
It's been frustrating for me coming in here, because I want to look back and see what's been done to understand how the decisions were made, and trying to look forward. The inconsistencies, whether it's the state laws, or whatever, it's governance, there's no, no rule, nothing's the same. It's always something that's changed in the process. Every year, there's something that's made another problem, there's, there's no consistency, is what I'm trying to get to, looking back. And right now, we're trying to do the best we can looking five years ahead, but with all the changes happening out of the capital, we're trying to do the best we can with what we have to work with.
Well, I don't think our government at the capitals, they aren't thinking about the citizens of Iowa. They have their own agenda, and I think it's really sad.
Yeah, we agree.
Sorry.
On all the charts you showed, none of them showed the caper funds. That's cash that you have can reserve all government departments' apples. It's cash that you don't show the public how much is in there.
Actually, I did show the general fund balance, that was on two different slides.
Well, another thing, there should be no tax increase, because you have new people coming into the, to the workforce all the time, and so it should never be increased. I have some points here on rebuttal to those who say poverty taxes are necessary. First and foremost, property taxes are worse than sex, because they are ultimately collected at the point of guns. Property taxes are extortion and robbery. Government has stolen all property, is renting it back to those who stole it from, and periodically raising the rent to cover criminal activities. Government in its minions. There is no other way to, of honestly defining property taxes. This county was originally, this country was originally designed to run on imposts and duties. Criminals, government and otherwise, never should, are never satisfied, no matter how much they raise the tax, it's never enough. Number two, the ill-gotten monies are poorly expended on personal and projects many people do not want. Third, taxes are, contrary to propaganda, always a drag on the economies. The higher the taxes, the less productive and poor society becomes. Fourth, the fact that taxes are said to be somewhat graduated naturally prevents people from attaining better lives and healthier society in general. Five, avoidance of taxes is always available to those at the top of the income spectrum, especially those who are much richer than those average and lower incomes. Six, poverty taxes are one-way, the wealthy block those in lower income brackets from attaining wealth and competing for luxuries they enjoy. Seven, the argument necessary services would be curtailed or abandoned without taxes, and both is bogus. Taxes take those both services out of the competitive arena and degrade the quality of services provided. Eight, there is necessarily nothing government does that wouldn't be called criminal if it wasn't government doing. Nine, government at all levels has dug a deep financial pit, with steep walls you cannot possibly climb out of, and it will, like others before. Also, the casino was meant to lower property taxes. I see him giving all kinds of monies to different organizations, why is it not working for the people out here that are paying property taxes? Where does that money go, and why are they not giving it to property taxes?
They do get some to the county.
I can, I can speak to. The county receives about four hundred and forty thousand a year that goes directly through the general fund, that reduces the general fund taxes. I know that, and I'm obviously speaking about Casino Black Hawk County.
Four hundred and forty thousand is all?
Approximately, here is what we receive. City of Waterloo receives substantially more.
What was the agreement when they started out?
We receive, under state law, which I know you don't like, but we receive half a percent of their adjusted gross receipts annually. City of Waterloo also receives that amount annually, I just happen to know that. They also signed an agreement with the casino owners to receive another one percent that they are able to use in their budget. The rest of it is held by the gaming association, which is a separate entity from the casino that holds the license for the casino. And that, there was an agreement negotiated for them to provide all the grants that you see going.
That's another thing I was going to ask, what about grants? You're talking about equipment and things that are necessary. Why aren't you using grant money to, to allow some of these services?
We love to, if you can, are aware of grants that would pay for things that we need, we, we try to do that. Unfortunately, there's a lot of things in government that the people that give out grants aren't interested in funding, let's put it that way.
We do have two departments, so conservation as well as health, do a lot of grant writing, and are very successful in, in grants.
We do get millions of dollars in grant funding between road funding and conservation grants and health grants. I think our departments actually do really well with that. Unfortunately, there aren't grants that want to fund everything we need.
Okay, well, higher taxes is also the second plank of the communist manifesto, so you keep increasing taxes if people can't afford to pay, and then you lose your property, and then you depend on government for your existence, so that's, that's what's going to happen, because you're taxing me out of my house.
I didn't get my memo from Karl Marx on the budget, but I do agree with you about the problem of wealth concentration at the top, you referenced that briefly. We've had, over the past forty years, through economic deregulation of Wall Street and corporations, we've seen, you know, the top ten percent of this country now owns sixty percent of the wealth. The bottom fifty percent of this country has six percent of that wealth. That's all through the deregulation of, of big banks and multinational corporations, and they're not paying their fair share of taxes. That's the huge problem in this country, and so that leaves services that need to be paid for, you know, on the burden of, of everybody else. And so this country gets united after really going after the millionaires and billionaires that are, you know, skirting all of us. That's the kind of situation that we're in, but it's been a forty-year trend in this country.
And sixty percent, is that being increased all the time then?
Yeah, it's been, it, it, that, those percentages go up every year. There's a massive boom in it, you know, medieval made, big profits during, every time the economic downturn goes down for everybody else, like the two thousand eight housing crash, the money at the top goes up even more and more. And, so.
Ken, me and, I'm hoping, so a couple of things I want to throw out there. One, so in Black Hawk County, when you own properties, you have two different times you pay. Am I correct in this? Because I, recently I bought a house a couple of years ago on a sheriff's sale, it was like, boom, I got lucky and I'm going to be able to go out to coin, I'm great. Cause I, recently I bought a house a couple of years ago on a sheriff's sale, it was like boom, I got lucky and I'm planning to be able to go out to coin that great. Uh, almost lost an house last year because I missed, uh, because I'm only given one bill a year, but I'm charged two steps at a time. So my question is, when I came back in after getting a letter saying that, um, my upsell house I purchased, which I'm in the middle of working. Um, to flip sold basically and move in running or whatever, something revenue. Um, I got a letter saying that it was going into the newspaper to be sold at the sheriff's sale and I literally bought it from a sheriff's sale. And I'm like, why didn't I get a letter telling me that I owed money instead of going straight to that? So to me, it seems like effective taxpayer dollars to make sure everybody's notified in case they miss, they get slipped through the cracks. People are working a lot nowadays for a second, you know, letter in the mail. I mean, to go, hey, by the way, please pay your taxes instead of, hey, we're gonna go sell your house. And that's, that just happened last year. Anybody?
That's a good point, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the idea of, I think, one letter to notify, um.
They do get a reminder letter.
They do get a reminder.
They get one statement a year, it has two steps on it. Number one is for September number, I should, it's for March. And there are those individuals that do slide through the cracks after we've nailed that. Okay, that does happen. But like right now, we just finished collecting for March. Anyone that's the liquid, we're getting ready to mail out reminder notices and yes, it does have language on there that's gonna tell you if you don't pay it, it will go to tax sale. But we're getting ready to mail those out next week. So it's not that we just go, hey, we're just gonna be quiet about it. We do send notices out so that individuals are aware that the taxes have not been paid.
It's just an interesting layer to get, getting a bill sent once, but getting charged twice a year. And I paid up front this year, I'm just, and I create a percentage because it's paying forward and reverse is what I was explaining to you, ridiculous math. But uh, so it's paying for what's coming up in advance. So I don't have to worry about tripping over that. I don't know, but if you're basically charging it out twice a year, why not send out two bills? Instead of a notice of, oh, you're late, we're gonna watch you.
It's quicker, now you're gonna be, you're gonna be paid more for the taxpayers. We mail out approximately probably seventy thousand statements. And when you calculate all of that, as long as it's, it's rather expensive.
I might say, it seems like it could be an important thing just to make sure. It's like I was new with the system, didn't know, you know, how this is working. So I ran into that.
Yeah, that is that unfortunately, I think your timeline was probably after the statements were out. And that does happen when there is that hiccup.
What's Black Hawk doing to, um, to increase the tourist stability of Black Hawk County? I recently read that, um, there's a bicycle trail or a hiking trail or some sort of trail across America. And it happens to go through Black Hawk County. We've got the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. And it, it's a real nice trail until you get to the county line. And then it's gravel road. Um, so you need different tires on your bicycle. I don't know anybody that carries different tires on their bicycles when they're riding on a trail. Um, is there some cooperation between our neighboring counties? That would really emphasize or help make some of these things more consistent? Um, you go down to Missouri, they have a little trail called the Katy Trail. It basically follows Lucen Park's adventure across the state of Missouri. But it also does turn, of course, to the state capital. And then back up to Kansas City. So it tags in St. Louis, Kansas City on this trail. The state of Iowa, I don't think has anything, um, like that. Um, we've got some national recognition of, of across America. What, what, what is Black Hawk County using to say, hey, it's been identified? Are we doing anything with that? Or are we gonna let something else happen in between time? And, and I'm not for spending fat taxpayer money for it. I think this should be a grant from Casino or some other organization to pay for it.
Mike, would you find, maybe talk a little bit about some of the investments that we've made to the trail? System in particular using ARPA dollars, which was not property tax helps?
Absolutely.
Relationships with other counties too, because you're disciplined.
Yep. Uh, Mike Kinderthun, Director of Black Hawk County Conservation. Um, just to address some of those questions that you just brought up. Um, we are right, as we sit right now, um, by the middle of summer, we will be finishing a six point four million dollar, uh, renovation of the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. Um, that six point four million dollars is entirely one hundred percent ARPA dollars, uh, that came to the county supervisors. They allocated a percentage of that, those dollars to us to work on that trail. Um, we then partnered with Lynn County, as you asked, why isn't that going on? Uh, we partnered with Lynn County to connect the last sixteen point five miles of the, the limestone chip trail that you talked about. It's all hard surface. By, by can go down through there, you won't have to change tires when you get there. So now you can go from Evansdale to Cedar Rapids, all hard surfaced all the way. It's, uh, it's finished with the exception of part of that six point four million dollars that, um, that we got through, again, through our supervisors with our ARPA dollars. And a cooperative grant between Lynn County and Black Hawk County. Uh, we acquired another one point four million dollars through Destination Iowa Funds, which were ARPA funds, the state's ARPA funds. Uh, Lynn County, uh, their portion of that was a little over three million dollars. So we do work in cooperation with, with other counties, other entities to, to, uh, put those things together. Um, from two thousand and eight, when we had the, the terrible flood, which took out, uh, every major trail bridge that was across the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. Um, there has been about seventeen million dollars spent on that trail, all from either FEMA, ARPA dollars, very little taxpayer dollars. We simply, we normally come to these people with trail restoration programs. We simply ask for engineering costs because that gets us the information that we need to go after state rec trail grants, federal rec trail grants. Um, TAP dollars, transportation alternative funds. Um, those are the three pools of money that we always chase when we're working on that Cedar Valley Nature Trail. ARPA was a blessing for us because it finished that trail for us. Well, we say finished, there's always work to do. There are eighteen bridges between Evansdale and the line where Lynn County takes over. Um, we are down, we're finishing, uh, through this ARPA project, we have replaced four more. Three of them aren't quite done yet, they'll be done by the middle of summer. Um, and then the next big thing, we have some repaving that we'd like to do, uh, on the existing northern sixteen and a half miles. Because that, that now is twenty plus years old and it's getting, uh, it's rough, we know that. And so we will continue to search for funds, um, to help pay for that. We normally don't just walk in here on a budget and say, we need five hundred thousand dollars to do, uh, two miles of trail. Uh, we go out there and again, it's state rec trail dollars, it's federal rec trail dollars, it's TAP dollars. That's what we look for to take care of those trails. Um, you talked about, uh, uh, rails to trails, um, there's a couple of different nationwide names for that. It's kind of changed hands a bit. We are a big part of that. They talk to us all the time. Cedar Valley Nature Trail is considered one of the twelve, uh, gateway sections of that trail. And that's why it was so important that we got those upgrades done. And again, with help from our supervisors and, um, and some work with our staff to find extra funding, um, we've got that done. So when the rest of the nation can come to meet and we get up that whole trail connected so that it's a coast-to-coast thing. Um, our part of it, uh, for what we have anyway, um, is going to be very, very nice because, fire away.
So the Cedar Rapids Trail, or I mean, the Cedar Valley Nature Trail goes north and south. Just the other thing that I was talking about, east and west.
Right.
Kind of follows, I wanna say the old Lincoln Highway, Highway twenty, which is now four lanes and no longer built even through downtown Waterloo. Is there any plans or thoughts to get into that old Lincoln Highway east, east-west route?
The, um, from the standpoint of Black Hawk County, we're, we're very fortunate because once we get off the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, which is the only section of the trail. Um, and that, that Black Hawk County, um, conservation takes care of. But once we get into the city of Waterloo, Cedar Falls, um, Hudson, um, those cities. They all have trail systems that virtually do connect with very little interruption, sometimes a little bit of highway travel to, to hook up to the next section. But we are pretty much covered from the east side of Black Hawk County, north, going out the west side. And, uh, the Great American Rail Trail people, they have this map in their head and they have these, these trails lined up. And they, they continue to communicate with all of us, and when I say all of us, all the county conservation systems in the state of Iowa. And then also all the states from east coast to west coast. And they've got a map lined out, they have areas where they, they hope that those trails can go because they've done research. Um, the biggest problem is acquiring property. You know, if it's, if it's private property, people don't, sometimes don't particularly want that trail running through their property. Um, if it comes down to acquisition, uh, tremendous amounts of, of dollars. And so, but there is a plan, Great American Rail Trail, they, they've kind of coordinated all that, they continue to communicate with us. We have, uh, at least four meetings a year with them. Um, and, and when we meet with them, we're meeting with people from the east coast to the west coast. And we hear about updates, sections of trail got taken care of, things that have been added on. So it is a work in progress. It's, it's gonna be an amazing thing, but it, uh, but it's gonna take a lot of time. Yeah.
And I just wanna make sure, you, you touched on tourism and attractiveness of a community. Uh, Casey Lake Restoration is a phenomenal project over at Hickory Hills.
Absolutely, I've got an update on it when we, when we get to that point this morning. Yes, Casey Lake Restoration is another, as far as tourism goes. Um, that, that's what we do in conservation, I mean, we are constantly looking for, uh, new outdoor recreation opportunities to bring people to Black Hawk County. And we have a tremendous amount of people who come to Black Hawk County. Part of the update I'll give today, our campground's open today. Um, today's the official opening, that's over four hundred campsites in Black Hawk County alone. Um, and they, and we get people, again, we get people from coast to coast. I mean, those campgrounds get full almost every weekend. Um, fishing and hunting opportunities all over the place, hiking, uh, you know, and, and biking and things like that. Um, we, we have over nine thousand acres that we manage, all open to the public to birdwatch if that's what you'd like to do, fish hunt, like I said. Boat ramps that we take care of. Um, so we have all that available in Black Hawk County. It's used very heavily, our, uh, our river system, mainly the Cedar River system. If you're ever bored on a Saturday, on a good hot Saturday, drive up to Highway C fifty-seven. Go by that new boat ramp that we have put in there and see if there's even a place to park. That's how many people come to Black Hawk County, just to float that section of the Cedar River. And there's tremendous usage from, uh, from Janesville South and on the west fork of the Cedar South. And you'll go in there and look at those licensed places, they're coming from counties all over the place. So they're bringing money in, they're buying gas, they're eating their lunch, they're doing all those things in Black Hawk County. And we're doing our very, very best to stay on the cutting edge of what's new, what do people like? And making sure that we provide that for them. Because, um, we know that county conservation is a big part of bringing that tourism here and getting those people to spend that money, so.
And, and appreciate the fact that you guys are so diligent in your grant searches and leveraging other dollars to make that work.
Can I ask you a question, Mike?
Sure.
Alright, so, look guys, in general, we here and see a lot of stuff, social media, all that stuff. And we're always trying to filter what's facts, what's not facts, and more what's gonna hit us in a local level. So on a larger scale, we see a lot of negative, a lot of weird stuff, you know, whoever, whichever side, blah, blah, blah. But it really comes down to dollars and facts. So my question for Mike is I've heard a lot about, and this may be not hitting us or not even something that's gonna hit you, Mike? Cause I know you're head of the conservation board. You know, um, is there federal dollars being cut for, you know, parks, stuff like that?
The only thing that we really, that, there are always federal granting opportunities out there. They don't apply to us in a large way. Uh, LawCon would be one of those examples, uh, we haven't used LawCon in a long time. It was used in the early stages of developing Black Hawk County Conservation because it was the only funding source that was out there. But there are a lot of restrictions and strings that tie you and tie your hands when you use LawCon. We don't like to use LawCon dollars. We will if we absolutely have to. Probably the last time we used any of those LawCon or federal dollars would have been about, oh, it would have been about six or seven years ago with a project that we had at Hickory Hills Park. But, so we don't use a lot of that. The only other thing that where federal dollars come in for us that we normally go after would be trail work. When I talked about the, the transportation alternative program dollars, the TAP dollars that you might hear about. We have used those or federal rec trail dollars. Now, we have, uh, we have a grant in for, uh, state rec trail for another one of the bridges on Cedar Valley Nature Trail. Um, if there are federal rec trail dollars out there this year and we're still waiting to find out, we just don't know yet. Um, we will probably go ahead and apply with them because we normally do. And, um, if we would, if we would get our state rec trail dollars and we didn't need the federal rec trail dollars, um, we, we might stay away from that. But we've used both before, but those, there aren't a lot of ways that, or a lot of pools of federal dollars that, that we use here locally.
That's it, appreciate it. To your, to your question, I think the, the department I'm most concerned about is the Public Health Department. There's about a million dollars of, of federal grants that come into that department currently. And a lot of those programs are, are in jeopardy. And so that's, you know, I'm, I'm going out to Washington DC next week to talk to our, to fight for Black Hawk County, to talk to our.
Can you list some of them programs that are gonna be affected?
What's that?
Can you list some of the programs?
Um, I'm not sure if Caitlin is on, but some of it is, you know, disease prevention and surveillance. Uh, some of it's, um, um, STI, uh, prevention. Um, there's looking like, um, just from national reporting, um, less of an emphasis on, uh, communicable these diseases. Um, which is concerning, you know? We have, you know, tuberculosis is in the county. Um, you know, measles is on the rise in different parts of the country. So that kind of stuff is really concerning to me. But that's why I'm gonna keep fighting, you know, for, for, for those investments.
Good, thank you. One last thing on that grander scale, which is what I call it. Uh, so, you know, you hear about a dismantling of the Department of Education, does that have an effect on our local education funding?
Um, it, it will have an impact on the school district for sure, both in terms of, um, of some, some of it will be funding. And some of it is just the guarantees. Uh, part of what the, my understanding of the Department of Education was created was for, um, to make sure that, you know, kids with, with learning disabilities weren't being left out in the cold. Um, so that there were some national standards, uh, because they were, you know, when it was district by district, uh, they were. There weren't special education plans and stuff. And so that's, when I, when I hear about the dismantling of the Department of Education, uh, it's those really vulnerable kids that I'm most concerned about.
Our governor's already done that. She's already taken away lunches for children during the summer. Vouchers for private schools. They're not going to public schools, money's going to private. So people, and a person can homeschool their child and they can educate someone else's children at home too. And they can get paid for that. And they can set their own curriculum, they don't have to teach what public schools do. If they wanna teach religion most of the day, they can do that. I mean, it's already happening in Iowa. What you think is going on federal, that's already happening in Iowa because of Kim Reynolds.
What you're saying is what I came to this meeting for is I wanna see how we're getting affected from over here on the grand scale and everything.
We are, we are.
I felt some of it, but I think literally we can be able to make assistance and let them know that this is, you know, some of this is reality. And what is real and what isn't, what's really hitting us, what isn't. So it gets away that mistiness that people are like, oh, this, you know, doom and gloom. You want your citizens happy, so you need solid information. I'll write you back to the fact we get a letter saying that, you know, our taxes are increasing, the states have blowed up. And you guys are going, what's it gonna be that big?
Did anyone listen to Chuck Grassley recently?
I'm sorry, if, if we've got a, you're okay, you're okay, I get it, I, I'm, I'm with you.
Well, I mean, he's voting against, I mean, he's going along with dismantling education, he's going along with that. He said he believed in that in nineteen, what, sixty-eight? That was his opinion. He's not voting for his constituents, all these people are voting for their own beliefs and that's not what they're in office for. And I, thank you, and I'm sorry I've interrupted so much.
Nope, nope, you're perfectly fine. And to your, to your other point, it was, it's been about a month ago now, but I, um, I hosted a town hall. Um, where a bunch of different agencies, there's a, a pretty good write-up in the Courier, thanks Maria. where a bunch of different agencies, there's a pretty good write-up in the Courier, thanks Maria, about it, that was really covering a lot of the different local agencies that were impacted by cuts and freezes and suspension of fundings. I'll be doing more of those in the future and so, I'll try to publicize those as much as I can. It's always hard to get the word out about the good, bad, and the ugly that's happening, but, but it's important, so I'm gonna keep doing those things.
In countywide, we have made investments on the communication side to be able to articulate to residents the good work that we're trying to accomplish and so, and frankly, being transparent, there's a lot of other governmental entities that don't necessarily post on their social media that they're having budget hearings and the like. It's a lot easier for folks to hope that nobody sees and just sort of run through and appreciate the fact that our communications person posted and is trying to engage.
Black Hawk County doesn't have any schools, that I know of. City of Waterloo is responsible for their own schools. And, if you look at the results of how many kids graduate, how many kids do other things, I think they're the lowest in the state. So, if somebody's gotta complain about me teaching my kids at home how to pass the tests that the state of Iowa requires, I'm sorry, I want the best that I can get. And, if I have to teach them, I will. So, I'm way beyond the age of having kids, but...
Never say never.
Never say never, that's true, but, well, I look at results. I look at efficiency. I look at obligations. How are you doing? How are you performing? And, I don't care what you support or don't support. If you can demonstrate, and you've done better this year than you have last year. If you spent less money than you did this year than last year. That's showing that you're really doing your job. And, everybody that's working in the county are doing their job. And, they are the real heroes. The guys that want more money, or "I can't do this," or "I can't do that," or "This ain't working." Those are all good things to listen to. But, if you want popular support, which is what this government, and I don't care what level you're on, if you want popular support, demonstrate. You've done better this year than last year. Or, if you can't do it on a yearly basis, at least do it in between election times. So, you can say, "Well, it took me three years." I'm on a four-year term. Took me three years to get that done, but we got it done. We lowered your taxes. We improved the county. We did this or we did that. And, that's my advice and my comments. And, I think the general support of the population will support those accomplished objectives.
Thank you. Are there any other comments about the budget in particular?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Yep, we've got two people trying to talk here. We've got Tom Little on the video and we've got a gentleman here. Mister, sir, if you want to go ahead and then Tom, if we can get to you after the gentleman here in the audience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I attended one of these meetings probably over 30 years ago. And, in a general manner, I've gotta say, I don't see that much has changed. The information that's available to me is pretty much the same information that was available back then. My kids were four years old, six years old at that time. Trying to raise a family in the eighties, as many of you probably know, it was pretty close to impossible. We made it through that. Wife and I are both in our seventies, you know, and neither one of us ever thought we was gonna get married again. But, later or not, we did. And, we moved into a home that would accommodate us appropriately. And, what brought us here today was partly my recollection of the meeting that I was at before. And, also, when we received our tax bill, that it's increased several hundred, if not over a thousand dollars, in the five years that we've been in this house. And, now, the question we're facing is, are we gonna have to sell this house someday so that we can afford a bike trail or other projects? Here we are thinking we was opening a new chapter to our life and we're finding out that our income is limited. It's not going up, the amount of, and I know the difference between the assessment and, you know, I don't need somebody to explain a lot of different things to me. I'm 77 years old now. And, what I'm looking for is to be able to live out the rest of my years as my, and my wife, being involved with our family and that type of thing. But, that is being, I'm being threatened with the inability to do that, with more money having to be paid out year after hundreds of dollars, hundreds of dollars, year after year after year after year. It only keeps going up. It never comes down. And, I don't care what you assess the value at, it's costing me more all the time. And, there's gotta come a point where what happened in the farmland in this country, all the small farms were ate up by the bigger ones, that, we're not saying we're a small farm, we're residential, obviously. Are we gonna live through seeing that happen in our personal lives in our senior years? And, I'm not that naive enough to think that, you know, you folks are in a limited pocket here as far as what you can do. But, I'm not so naive as to think that you can't do something to move us more in that direction. We need to do what our current government, federal government, is showing us needs to be done. And, that is, we need to be more efficient and reduce costs. Otherwise, the government ends up with all of our properties. We end up with nothing but being dependent on what somebody else is willing to put their signature to before I can have heart surgery or lung surgery or liver replacement. We worked all our lives and I had a very physically challenging job all my life with these hopes in mind. When I took out the form and signed it for social security when I started employment, there were all kinds of promises made. I haven't seen one of them come about, none of the money has been refunded. My concern, again, to wrap this up, is our ability to pay our bills from year to year. The cost goes up and my wife and I, we live a rather, we don't live in the fast lane. We don't stop at McDonald's for breakfast on the way here and go to Big Boy after, you know, I can't even tell you where a lot of the restaurants are and what they do. We live a very conservative lifestyle. Those that are in the fast lane are in for a real big surprise, especially if things keep going the way that they're going. It needs to stop and we need to see a reduction in our costs. Thank you for listening, for your time.
Thank you so much. Any other comments in the room? Otherwise, we'll move on to online.
Yeah, this is Tom Little, retired county supervisor. I have a couple of questions. Would you address the salaries that are in the current budget if there was any increases?
Yeah, Ms. Whedon, if you want to speak to...
Amanda Fessner, HR Director. So, we have union contracts that we have negotiated wages on that all have increases. They range this year from law enforcement being around 4% and across the board, down to some in conservation being 2.5%. So, those are building through the budget this year. Those are locked in for the next two years. And, then, we'll be doing a renegotiation just on wages for the last two years of those contracts.
What were the elected officials?
So, the elected officials were 5% for the county attorney, who's, and then 10% for the remaining elected officials. Our elected officials make up about 20 people with their appointed deputies. They were in the same boat as almost all of the job classifications for Black Hawk County, where we were behind the market anywhere from 85 to, oh, I'm sorry, from 15 to 25% on average. So, that was part of the compensation study that was completed. We held off in doing elected official salary increases and first focused on the workforce, which was our unions and non-bargaining and appointed positions. And, then, this is the last leg of that compensation adjustment to bring people up to be more competitive in pay.
And, are you talking about competitive in two other counties?
The compensation study included cities, counties, school districts. I would say mostly public sector, agencies across the state. There was some private sector data, as that was some of the feedback that we got from employees that you could go make a better wage working at Quickstar, working at Target, working at John Deere. We had a pretty high turnover rate the last several years that has started to level off. And, we brought our wages more in line with the market to be about 95% to the market average as opposed to where we were before, which is anywhere from 15 to 20% behind the market. But, yes...
But, like John Deere's, that's a private enterprise, it's not public.
Right. So, we're very cognizant of that, which is often why we look at the top 10 counties excluding Polk County, because Polk County's just too large for us to compare to and excuse the data too much. We shouldn't compare ourselves necessarily to Polk County, but we should be comparing, we've lost employees to cities, to counties, Story County, the Des Moines area, Cedar Rapids. We saw a lot of that, especially, I'd say, two years ago when we really felt the need for that countywide compensation classification study. So, we don't necessarily go and look at exactly what John Deere is doing, but they were part of that published data sources that does include private sector information because that is also a competitor to the public sector.
So, all the elected officials except the county attorney was 10%?
Yes, so, they all right now, today, are 85% to the market average. So, they're basically behind in pay by 15% compared to an auditor in Story County, compared to a treasurer in Scott County, Potawatomi. Or, I think what I showed was that all of our elected officials do not break the top 10 for pay when you look at the top 10 counties. So, for example, our auditor, if you looked at all the counties, there's 99 counties. Number one is Polk, we're number five. Our auditor, treasurer, recorder, for example, were all being paid like as 11th highest. So, our goal is to get them closer to five. Most of our directors are anywhere from seven to eight in pay when you compare us to the large counties. And, that's the direction that we've been trying to move so that we can improve their retention and retain talented employees here, including elected officials.
Do we look at any of the variables as far as, I was never a fan of comparing Black Hawk to any other county because every other county, like Lynn, Scott, Dubuque County, they're different situation, different tax rate, different TIF districts and so forth. So, I usually tried to concentrate on what Black Hawk County is. So, anyway, I thank you for the information. My other question was for Michelle. You said we had high reserves. What percent is our county reserves at?
It's about 62% of total expenses as of June of '24.
Okay.
It's expected to drop quite a bit by June of '25.
Has the board had any discussion about maybe dropping the tax increase rate by using county reserves, which is actually tax dollars?
We basically are doing that about $1.2 million this year. Using the vacancy rule and another piece.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments in the room or online?
I have two written comments.
Yes.
We had a citizen that asked the county not to raise property taxes. Some older residents are struggling to pay their taxes and some are not paying their utilities in order to pay their property tax bills. One more, it is time to cut back on taxes, also time to make government smaller. I live from paycheck to paycheck, so no more taxes.
Thank you.
I have a question on two of the positions, the one for the county attorney and the one for sheriff. You're making a deputy. Is that being promoted from within or is this a new hire that you're paying additional salary expenses for?
So, the county attorney one, that is being promoted from within. It's called a percentage deputy. And, so, under Iowa code, elected officials can have a percentage deputy. We have them in law enforcement with the sheriff, we have them in the recorder's office, we have them in the attorney's office, so that's not, that's just a shift in classification.
Is this special training that they have to go for? Or, is this part of their training when they go down to Des Moines?
So, it's more of like the type of caseload that they're looking at. It's of a higher degree of complexity. It could be, it's not like your misdemeanor cases, it's gonna be something of a higher level. It also may require the additional oversight of the other attorneys that are working all those caseloves through the county attorney's office. So, I don't think there's specific training. They're all attorneys, they all pass the bar, they're all able to practice. It's more of a designation to respond to the operational needs of the county attorney's office, so. The sheriff, can you just ask your question again? I think I heard about the deputy. Okay. So, I believe that is an additional FTE, in a sense of that we did not remove a position when that was allocated. So, currently, for the sheriff's office, we have the sheriff, we have a, what they call first deputy. That is what's new. And, then, we have three captains and three lieutenants. Prior to that change, under the previous sheriff, we had one sheriff, four captains, no, three captains and four lieutenants. So, it's kind of another classification change. However, I do believe that that did add an FTE to the budget. We have a pretty significant amount of vacancies that occur out of that department due to running a 24/7 operation like a drill. We have yet to be fully staffed there. So, it isn't one that I would say is gonna actually have a large impact because we do have a significant number of vacancies that we're accounting for within, I guess, that turnover for this type of position, if that makes sense. But, it is on the actual, you know, you would see that, let's say, we have 150 positions there, now, we have 151 with the sheriff's office with that change. I think that's...
That's the only.
That's the only increase to positions this year that we have.
Why are they adding that designation? And, where are the funds coming from?
So, I probably have Michelle help me with that. The sheriff and I gave a presentation previously to the board about the need for that position and that he wasn't able to necessarily, you know, reduce out another role at this time. But, it was... But it was encouraged that we look for those opportunities as retirements come in, um, as to, again, to that efficiency. We have a lot of longevity here at the county where there may be, and roles change, uh, tasks may change, where we are looking at when somebody may retire or if we were have to, you know, look at a budget restraint of having to make it a change. That's something that we're having conversations with our department heads. And wouldn't necessarily rule it out, should they become fully staffed and we not have that buffer to where they would have to make it a hard decision as to not fill a role? If we were able to be, you know, if we, we were capped. But, um, as of today, right now, um, there isn't a reduction going on over there. It was just one position being added that also accounting for those vacancies, um, that we, that Michelle does and Michelle would help in us navigate.
Do you feel an urgency to, uh, control the cost?
Yes. I mean, I don't think that anybody looking at this and what we have now, it's not necessarily, when I looked at the slides and see that half of it is from salaries, um, clearly that is, we're not, we're not making a product here. We're here to provide a service under the Iowa code. And so that is an area as we look at, when we adjusted salaries and realized that we were fairly behind and that that was having a, taking a toll on our operations, as Davis spoke to. Uh, when you're going to train someone, it usually costs you to recruit and train someone and keep them. And you don't usually get that value out of that person after about a year or two, um, because it's constantly costing you to have to retrain, rehire, all of those areas that were concerning us. And one of the driving factors we saw was retention, where that our wages were pretty low compared to other agencies. So it is something that we're constantly looking at, I would say, our departments are, even as we go into negotiations this year. And I think a lot of counties and cities are looking at the limitations. Um, we saw a lot of wage increases since COVID. Um, public sector, private sector, having to make some adjustments, but I think we're gonna see that level off. And when we go back to the table to negotiate wages, uh, it's possible that we are gonna be looking at some pretty likely lower increases than what we've seen in the past.
Do we have a current budget that we try to, and, you know, and in times past, I, I, uh, I know that, well, we were only three percent over budget. We were only four percent over budget, you know? Well, why about being three or four percent under budget? I mean, what we're looking at here today in our economy is greater efficiency because otherwise we're stepping in quicksand.
So that is some of the things that, that we've done. So for instance, the million dollars that we use, um, we take that out of reserves and set it aside to make sure that we're not taxing, understanding that there is turnover, right? We don't want to tax under the assumption that all positions are always full, knowing that there is turnover. And so we use that million dollars in our reserve as a pool to safeguard that we can, we can have those folks on staff, uh, we can staff up. But we don't want to tax you to the point if we don't have those positions filled. And recognizing that there are typically a handful of positions. And so those efficiencies are there. The, the intent is never to tax you more than, nobody wants to tax you or themselves more than you have to, right?
I appreciate your comment. I, I, I've been full circle. I've seen them all, you know, um, I do appreciate, uh, your comment. I, uh, I, I see it as something of value. I'm not far this way or far that way. Uh, but I do have concerns.
You still talk about taxes and personnel in negotiating new things and benefits. In Black Hawk County, does all their employees live in Black Hawk County? Do they have to? Or if they do, is there any benefit for them living in Black Hawk County? For example, when you get your assessed value, if you're a homesteader, you get a deduction. If you're a veteran, you get a deduction. And I think even if you're a senior citizen, you get a deduction. Maybe that's no longer applies since I look. But if you give a deduction or be a veteran, part of the negotiation, and I don't know if it can be only in Black Hawk County or it has to be a state legislative asked thing, can you get a property tax deduction if you work in the county that you work in? You live in your county. I live in Black Hawk County. I work for Black Hawk County. I get a little bit break on my property tax. As opposed to a person working in Black Hawk County and living in Fayette, and all their money goes to Fayette, not to here. What goes around comes around.
Right now, we don't have any requirements, um, that I, outside of possibly law enforcement and in our roads department where you have to live within a certain mile radius of that work. As for negotiations, we're very, their Iowa code dictates what we can negotiate with our labor. And that would be luckily outside, um, of those requirements, um, and not one that I've seen practiced widely. Um, not saying that it couldn't be explored, um, that, that could be possibly a perk or something, but it's not within the scope of negotiations that we're allowed to do with our workforce. Um, but there are, uh,
Well, if it's not allowed to do, we could also, as a county, go to our representatives at the state level and say, hey, we want people to work for Black Hawk County. We want them to live in Black Hawk County. But part of the negotiation then could be say, hey, you live in Black Hawk County, you work in Black Hawk County, we can give you a little bit of a break on your property tax.
I would say most of our workforce likely lives in Black Hawk County. Um, I don't often see a tremendous amount of people traveling from way outside of the area. We have a, a handful that likely, you know, do, but generally, most of our employees, you know, live and work here or very close to the surrounding areas. So, but certainly something that could be entertained. Um, and I understand where it's coming from. So, but.
In the, in the interest of keeping things moving along, we do have a meeting on the twenty-first, is that correct? April twenty-first, um, is when we'll,
Budget adoption.
Every Tuesday we have our meeting, but the budget adoption.
This will be on a Monday.
Oh, yeah. The budget adoption meeting is on the twenty-first of April. Uh, that'll be at nine AM.
Actually, it's at ten.
Sorry, ten AM.
Ten AM, on the April twenty-first.
Uh, so really do appreciate, I think, a, a really hearty, um, productive conversation. And thank you all for, for joining. Um, do we have any comments from the board of supervisors? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and receive, um, the file, uh, written in oral comments.
I think for us, I think we typically can speak at the, at the hearing, final hearing and make our comments and thanks to the staff and the different ones that participated.
So is that a motion?
I would like a motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same side. Motion carries. The special session is adjourned. We'll give everybody a quick little recess if you want to stick around for, you know, the.